Yes, sir. Yeah, I called it to order roll call, yeah.
Here, roll call, please.
Trustee Markwart?
Here.
Trustee Schenk?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Forster?
Here.
Trustee Cook?
Here.
President Byrne?
Here.
And trustee Takaoke gave prior notice that he would not be in attendance tonight.
Okay, uh, should we do president pro temp appointment?
Yeah, motion, motion and.
I nominate trustee Cook to be president pro temp for the duration of the meeting.
Second.
Motion second. Roll call.
President Byrne?
Aye.
Trustee Markwart?
Aye.
Trustee Schenk?
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Aye.
Trustee Forster?
Aye.
Trustee Cook?
Aye. That motion carries, all right. So we are called and everything, would everyone please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the divine of the United States of America.
Thank you.
For which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first item is under the village president. Do we want to do them in that order or do you want to flip the order and do chiefs first? Just stay with this? Okay, all right. Recognition of Public Works Director Village Engineer Dave Brown? Well, first, I'm sorry, citizens wishing to address the board on something that, other than what's on the. Okay, all right. Now, the village president's report and the recognition of Public Works Director and Village Engineer David Brown.
Yeah, I would like to take the top of the to not only thank Dave Brown for his 30 years of service to the village, but I'd like to recognize Dave for many contributions he made to help define Vernon Hills as a town. Dave started with Vernon Hills on May 3rd, 1983, as our village engineer. At the same year, I became village president. The community had a commercial corridor, several subdivisions, but still consisted of men from where it feels in a former Navy slash Nineteenth eighty. There's 30 years have since passed. Look at us now. After the Great Recession, we needed to restructure our organization. And one day became Village Engineer Public Works. During Dave's tenure, it was instrumental in planning to include the development of Craig's Landing, development of the V hack, establishment of the Arby Veterans Memorial, the development of Melody Park, the development of Hawthorne Mall. Also, Dave, we knew if we purchased a V block, we would be very yet to see large achievements of snow, according to Dave. Dave has supported many of our partners, including through their school, library districts, and the park districts with their projects as well. Most village roadways and commercial parks that exist have successfully passed our permissions and can gain board approval. Dave contributed. Excuse me. After 30 years, 38 years of public service, Dave has earned his opportunity to retire. And I would like to commend Dave on behalf of the village board, thank him for his dedication to our community. Wish him the best of the year. Dave, you've been a great guest, an asset to the village, and I will definitely miss you as well, the residents.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mayor. Trustees, any trustees want to add anything? I'll defer to. Trustee Schenk?
So, um, when I, before I ran for trustee, I would always find myself on that side of the podium, speaking to the board about other things. And it was Dave Brown who kind of followed me, found me outside and said, hey, did you know that there's going to be a seat opening up? You should really consider running. And Craig, Craig and I have been friends for a long time. And he would always say, if you ever have a question, ask Dave Brown. He's a great guy. He knows everything about this town. I don't know if I will truly understand the scope of what you've done, but I'm so happy to be living in this town. Most of what, because what Public Works does to keep our town clean, running, operational, I, it all flows right up to you. And when you and I met out here, the Public Works, you can just tell that that was your baby. And you took care of it and nurtured it. And I guess it's time, you know, it's, we're going to miss you. So I'm going to miss you. So thank you, David, for everything.
Trustee Markwart? I've lived here 43 years. Dave coming in, I have to admit for myself, and knowing him, I've had questions, I've given a call. I get a call right back. So it's, it is difficult to see you go because you and I do have conversations. And the good thing out of this, your help for all these years, I appreciate it very much. But the blessing of things is that you and I will probably still be in contact once you leave here because at least I have a neighbor up north, which is you. And I thank you for all the help that you have done for this village. And the support is unbelievable. Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Trustee Forster?
They said it well. They, you're, you've done so much for us. And I, I've only been here two and a half years and I can't even grasp what you've been doing here for 30-plus years. You are a wealth of knowledge and we are so fortunate that you gave your time to us because that's voluntary to do so. So we are lucky that you chose us. And when I first came on board, you spent some time and educated me and I couldn't have appreciated that more. And you are just, if, if anyone ever had a question and we said, David said it's okay, then we knew it was okay. And you are actually also famous in my house, whether you realize it or not. Back in the day, when my kids were younger and we'd go to the open house, when they couldn't get into the trucks, my kids always referred to you as the, the tall guy at the truck place. It was really nice. So you have also left an impression on the youth of town and just being the nice friendly man that pushed them up on the trucks to get them up there so they could see it. So I just want to say thank you for everything.
Trustee Abner?
Ditto to everything everyone else has said. There isn't much left other than you will be sorely missed. Certainly at the meetings, I've trusted every word you've said. And anytime we had a question about anything, we can count on you having a strong fundamental knowledge about, about what goes on in this community. And I'll miss your smile, looking at you every time someone said something either amiss or, you know what I mean? And, but we will miss you.
Yeah, and I can only echo what, what's been said. You know, I've been up here this, you know, 30 years now, so I've been here with you the whole time. And no matter how insignificant the question might have been, you were always there to answer it. And, you know, always answered it as, you know, thoroughly and, and it just was always very helpful to be able to come to you with any question. You always got back to us on that. And I, and I, you know, the, the work you did on the V hack, it was funny, I was just hearing the train go through. You were very instrumental in all that work with the Federal Railroad Administration to get the quiet zones through town. That was huge when that happened. And, and without your work on that, we, we wouldn't have been there. The one thing before you leave, and if you could pass this on to the, I'm still between Larry Lashin and Ed Loudenshager, and now you, New Century Town Four, the homeowners association, which is right behind the Public Works building. When that was expanded in 93, 94, was promised an English garden. And I was just wondering if, you know, if before you leave, you could pass on that at some day, there, there needs to be an English garden back there somewhere back in, because Lashin promised it to, and it was never, you know.
I will make sure to place a call with Craig Malin. I think he was the one who came up with that concept. And so I'll follow up on that, sir.
Okay. But seriously, thank you so much for everything you've done. It's, 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 it's been amazing and you've been extremely helpful. Police Department recognition. Chief?
Thank you, how's that? All right, thank you, Mr. President, Village Board. And, and before I make a couple of comments about our partnership, I think Dr. Oppenheim said something very important that Dave showed a lot of restraint and discipline sometimes. Sitting next to him, what you didn't realize is all the times he was holding his hand back from pressing the call button when, when somebody was saying something and Dave knew the answer. And trust me, he showed extraordinary restraint because usually it worked out. He found the right time to press a button. And a wise trustee or president would say, Dave, help unscrew this train of thought we have right here. And it, it was just really cool to sit next to him and watch him, his hand just pull back and go each time. But in all seriousness, y'all talk about what Dave's done for the village and I couldn't agree with you more. I'm going to miss him because just like you, he's a wealth of knowledge and I can call on him at any time. But what a lot of people don't understand is the partnership that we have at the police department with Public Works and how much we rely on Dave and his team. And it's really more than Dave. It's, it's Dave's experience, his leadership and the example he sets that runs throughout his staff that makes this village such a great place to work. And, and our ability to do our job and serve the public in the way we do just wouldn't be nearly as effective or as efficient if it wasn't for Dave's team just doing anything and everything we, we, we ask of them. And it's, it's a great partnership. It's a great friendship. We're going to miss you, Dave, and, and thank you and job well done. So I've got a little memento here for you. If my team wouldn't mind joining me up here, we'll just all present to Dave. This is a Village of Vernon Hills Police Department patch that's signed by every current member, men and, men and women of the police department would like to present this to you, Dave.
I appreciate that. Collectors. All right, can we get a picture? Where's Rob? He's taking off. He's being bashful. Shower. Congratulations.
Okay. Public Works Department recognition.
Well, thank you for having us. Dave, we'd like to thank you for 30 years of service, the Public Works family. We appreciate the 13 years while you were the director. You know, we had good times, bad times. As you see, the, most of the families showed up. We had a lot of fun. I'm hoping you and Karen have a good time in your retirement. I hope you come back and visit us. We appreciate, you always got us the tools we needed, the supplies we needed. There was never a time that we didn't have something. So you guys all know, since Dave came, we've had three or four major windstorms. As you guys know, when he first started, the wind blew through, we had a disaster. We had one of the biggest snows, I think 22 inches we plowed. We're hoping maybe after he goes, the storms will quit a little bit. But Mother Nature's was not good to him when he first started. We were able to handle it. So we thank you for all the teamwork. You were always there for us. You're always good with our families. If something came up, we really appreciate everything you did for us. Josh, you guys want to come up and we'll give Dave a sign?
And also, Gene, I wanted to point out, there was also the plague and pestilence when I started here, my, my first year. We definitely had the largest snowfall.
Yes.
Windstorms, Emerald Ashbore came to town. I think the board and Mayor Byrne were wondering why they hired me, that I brought all this baggage with me. But we persevered, didn't we?
Yes, we did. Josh, would you sign? Did you know, as you retire, you get a sign from us? So I didn't get to see it, so. Well, would you open it so we can see the sign?
Thanks for taking?
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
I know my job.
Dave's place. More importantly, Vernon Hills Disc Golf Course. It's got my basket on it. It's got my par 30 for my retirement and the woods. So my staff knows me very, very well. One of the things that I hope to do is be out on the, in the woods and on the water. And that's always been my dream and appreciate it. So I'm going to take this opportunity. I may be going out of order, but it's my moment, so. I am leaving, but we're in good hands. You know, we, we went through the interview process. We've been through a lot of interview processes lately. I think Kevin's assembled just a fantastic team. So you're in good hands. I think one of the things that people were wondering about was, you know, how do we, you know, how do we continue? How would the newer Public Works Director and Village Engineer, how is that person going to be successful? Very easily. Look at the group that's with me. They're the ones that make us look good. They're the ones that have carried all the weight for the village. I'm just the eye candy, so. But I stand back. I don't know if everyone fully understands what this group does for the village, each and every one of them. I mean, this is my moment, but it isn't. It's the beginning of where I started 30 years ago and we're handing off the torch to them and the baton. And they're going to, they're going to carry that torch very well. I'm not up all the time when we have to snowplow. They're out here getting that done. Carissa has been just a complete asset to the village. Mary, join her. She's taken a lot of the burden off of Carissa to make us even more successful. Mr. Masloff, Mr. Masloff's been here for 28 years, I believe now. So in terms of knowing the village, he knows the village better than I. He's been on every site since, yeah, I don't know. Data's, right? But every project, he's been instrumental in the development of the village. Josh Hanson, Josh Hanson oversees all of our open space. Not a lot of villages have board members that support the open space development, development, restoration like others. But we have a multi-year, multi-location, we have award-winning projects. And Josh, he's, he's the one that oversees that for us. He's building a boardwalk out at the, at Hardy Lake now. All those little whimsical characters that you see that tell you it's a change of season, that's Josh Hanson. So these are all his ideas. Gene Schroeder, how long have you been?
35.
Longer than me. So, Gene, when I first came over from engineering, I guess, the second time was in Public Works, back over to the Village Hall. Moved me back. And he took me back, so I appreciate that. But we're in very good hands. Gene knows the village very well. He knows his job. When it comes to snow plowing, him, Ken, the rest of the team, they have it down. So you're in good hands. Chris, I'm going to miss you very much. So you're fantastic. Thank you for joining our, our team too. One of our, our newer employees and fantastic. And you have a great future in front of you too. So this seems like it's my day. It's the Public Works team that has carried us to this. So I just appreciate all of you guys. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hold on. Hold on. Okay, now switch around. No, this is. Gene, thank you all.
Thank you.
Gene. Okay, and village manager?
Yeah.
To close up this?
I'll, I'll wrap us up here. And Dave, congratulations on a fantastic career with the village. We've heard this evening about all of the accomplishments you've had. And I know that you'll say that one of your biggest accomplishments has been the development of the V hack. And we have many people that watch this meeting from home. So in case there's some that aren't familiar with where the V hack is, we have a special guest that's going to kind of give us a little introduction on what the V hack is and where you can find that.
Hi, I'm David Brown. I'm a village engineer for Vernon Hills. Today, we're bringing you a program about the Nike base. It's one of the projects that I'm involved in within Vernon Hills. For you that aren't aware of where the Nike base is, it's immediately south of Route 60 along Fairway Drive, right adjacent to the Arbor Theater. In fact, that's where we are right now.
I think you're wearing the same tie, first of all. And for some context, that was filmed in 2001. In 2001, I was a sophomore in high school. Your replacement was in eighth grade. And I think Gina just celebrated 20 years with the village. So that's kind of just to give you a sense of how long you've been here and all that you've done with the village. But if we can go to the next slide, again. Well, now you don't have to own any, how about that? So we, we do want to recognize you, Dave, and, and have your legacy be remembered always at the V hack. So in the coming months, this plaque will be found out at the V hack. I'll read it to the group, presented to David H. Brown, P.E., in recognition of his 30 years of public service to Vernon Hills and for his management and oversight of the, of the conversion of the former naval Nike base into the V hack sports complex with sincere appreciation, March 3rd, 2023. So Dave, we didn't have much time together. I was only here for a fraction of your career, but I really did enjoy our time together. I appreciate all you've taught me about the village and for welcoming me here. And I wish you nothing but the best in your retirement. Congratulations.
And, and just dovetailing on that, there are so many other things we could, we could say about, you know, the stuff you guys and, and all of Public Works and that have done. The, the one that my wife reminded me, and that's why I've got to get this in. When you drive down our streets, the, the plantings, like especially on Butterfield Road and stuff like that, just how much better that looks than, than some other places. Talking about the V hack, the, the Arbor Theater, the memorial that we put in there for the Veterans Memorial, all that stuff. Wouldn't have been done without an incredible Public Works Department, without you doing, you know, all the engineering on it. So Dave, we're going to miss you.
All right, I've got a few people to thank too, so. I just appreciate being a part of this village. I mean, I guess I was born in 61. This village started three years prior to me. I've, I've been here for the last 30 years. When I first came here, I didn't know where the boundaries of Vernon Hills were. It was pretty sporadic. I didn't know where the village of Indian Creek started and where our village was. The very first day before my interview, I went to the half-day area. That was not in Vernon Hills at the time. I'm just pleased the people that I've worked with, specifically when you start out, just the, the vision that this board and other boards have had previously. We knew where we wanted to get and we've been able to tackle those very important items. You know, we talked about strategic planning and I think a lot of people spend a lot of time on strategic planning. We had a plan, wasn't as formal, but we knew what we wanted Vernon Hills to be. One of the specific goals was we wanted to have a high school. We have a high school. We wanted to have a post office. That was important to us. We have that. We've just checked the box and we went down the list and we've achieved all that. And that's done by a whole community. We talk about the V hack and I really appreciate that. That means the world to me. You know, the V hack, we all pulled together. We had the Base Closure Act and we knew the land was going to be available. We didn't know if it was going to go to the feds, the state. Ultimately, it came to the village, but we were prepared for that. We ended up working with three school districts and the village cooperatively to make that a special place in town. Just the development, what I've seen in this village ever since I started, it's like there's some development along Route 60 and certainly there's other people. Tom, I, I know specifically, you've seen a lot more than myself and others have too. But I just remember one of the first projects I was involved with was we didn't want the cleanup operations from the V hack to go through Stone Fence. And so we had to find a way to get it out to 60. There weren't any businesses there, just really along Route 60, so we had to extend that. That was really important to the, to the residents, to make sure that it wasn't going through their residential area. And I just think that has been what the village has looked for, for many, many years. It's like, what will this village be? And what it's become, I'm very proud of. I'm very proud that I've been a part of that. To all of the trustees, I mean, you do this for a reason. This isn't your primary job. It's because you care about this community. When you guys go to vote, I'm just surprised how many times you guys vote unanimously. And you know what? You may have different opinions, you may work through those, et cetera, but that you vote in favor of things consecutively, in support of each other and in a sport of our goals for Vernon Hills, it's a very special place. We just had a V hack scheduling meeting recently. And, yeah, they brought me some donuts and a couple of balloons and it was a good time and everything. But that was really one of the things we reflected on. We reflected on whether it's Mayor Byrne or whether it's other trustees. You guys have, you know, supported the athletic programs out there. You've coached your own kids, you've coached other kids, and we've passed the torch to them too. The volunteers that they go out and they teach the kids and they're enjoying theirself at the V hack, that just brings me a lot of pleasure. And you know what? It's not just staff and the board, the community. And I, I'm not running for office, so I'm retiring, so I just want you guys to know that. But the community, the, the people who we've seen over time, the Cliff Youngs, the, the Chet Listers and people who come to these board meetings and they just want. and people who come to these board meetings and they just wanna belong to this community and there's a good reason they wanna belong to this community. You guys have built something pretty special here, so just proud to be part of that and I'm honored to, to know all of you and to work with you and I'm very honored to have such a great Public Works Department continue to support them. I know you will. You say very great things about them to me and I try to pass that on and I think they understand that, but they're special people. So, I appreciate, you know, all the support that you can give to them and just appreciate being part of Vernon Hills and I'm not, I'm not moving to the U.P. I will be spending non-winter seasons up there because we all know they average, where my cabin is, 240 inches of snow a year, 396 inches in one year. So, Karen's the wiser of the two. She's not gonna allow me to be up there year-round, but I'm gonna enjoy the summers. And in Gurnee, that'll be our southerly home. So, I'm merely 20 minutes down the road. We'll be cross and pass and just appreciate all the time with you guys. So, thank you.
And, and in your defense, Dave, this picture that's up there right now proves you do have two ties.
I borrowed one.
Anybody else have, I mean, I feel like...
I think we're good.
You think so? You sure, Dave? Okay. Then, the only other person with a speaking part tonight before we get to Omnis is Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President.
And I'm sure Public Works was involved in what you're about to talk to too, right?
Um, a couple of their staff, but certainly I'm gonna, you're welcome to stay or if you wanna go start toasting Dave, I don't blame you, but about three years ago, I started, I briefed the, the village board and asked for authorization, enter into an agreement with a company to provide ALPRs, Automatic License Plate Reader, cameras. We, right away, went to work on that and then we hit a COVID pandemic and we were delayed for some period of time. So, we installed 10 cameras in October of 2020 and I'm here tonight to give the board a little bit of an update and, and share some successes of this technology and I'll get to the punchline. It simply has proven to be one of the smartest technologies to affect public safety that I've seen in probably the last two decades. At least the last 15 years, this technology has really helped us protect the community. The, at the time, we decided to install the cameras, we knew that the permitting process with IDOT was gonna be somewhat delayed, so we chose to install these cameras on roadways that we already had the rights to, local roads. We installed these cameras and I'm glad we did that because it turns out, the process and the back and forth with IDOT and the finding the special sauce to get to the goal line with IDOT just was solved a month ago. And we are, so I'll brief, I'll brief the board a little bit about where we're going next with this technology, but I wanna stop first and just highlight a couple important messages, particularly for those members of the community that maybe don't know what I'm talking about or haven't heard of this technology before. So, these are basically small cameras that are mounted onto a pole that are powered by a solar panel and that are connected through a cellular system. And what they do is they take images of license plates. They have very special cameras on there that recognize license plates or even the design of a vehicle. So, if all we know about a vehicle is it was a blue Toyota, it has an algorithm to figure out that, that image. It grabs an image of that plate as the cars go by the camera. What's important to know is that it compares those images against what's called the hot sheet. This is a list of vehicles that are wanted for some reason. They're either wanted for being stolen, they're associated with a person that has an arrest warrant that's in the federal NCIC, the National Criminal Information System, or they're associated with a person that's missing for an Amber Alert or Silver Alert. So, a missing young person or a missing adult with some level of cognitive impairment. These cameras are not used in any way, shape or form for traffic enforcement, for revenue generation, or for any kind of minor. They are used for criminal investigations. And importantly, those images are only retained in the system for 30 days and then they fall off the database. So, I wanna share with you some ways with which this technology's helped you and I can tell you two broad senses of the categories of how this technology works. It works first proactively in that when a stolen car drives into Vernon Hills and passes one of these cameras, our officers on duty in our dispatch center gets an alert and they get an image of what that camera saw and they can vet it right away to make sure this is, the camera is reporting that this car is stolen. And oftentimes, we can act on that information in real time. We also use these cameras in a reactive mode. A crime has occurred and we have information about a vehicle and we can go and see, has a vehicle like that passed one of our cameras? And oftentimes, by finding a license plate, we can find out more information about a suspect or an offender and lead a case. So, with that, I'm gonna introduce Commander Andrew Gillespie. Andrew is our commander that oversees our investigations. Prior to being promoted to sergeant, he was actually just a hard-working detective that has, has worked more burglaries than most of us combined in, in the police department. So, he's got a lot of experience and that's why he's overseeing our investigations. And Commander Gillespie's gonna share just a couple real examples of how this technology works and then I'm gonna come back to you and kinda tell you where I'd like to go, but very much important for the community to be aware of what we're doing.
Yeah, thanks, Chief. So, I'd like to share some of our overall successes with the Flock Safety Automated License Plate Readers, or ALPRs, to go a little deeper in a few cases where the ALPRs assisted us. Since implementation, we've documented at least 60 significant successes. The ALPR has helped our village recover 14 stolen automobiles, locate three missing persons and identified 39 vehicles, suspect vehicles, with 14 of those leading to the identification of an offender. Today, ALPR is used in just about every case that we investigate. Cases that previously had 0% solvability now have another lead because of the system. During our initial setup, cameras were placed to assist in investigations of crime as a reactive tool, but we quickly learned that our ALPR has benefited us and our agency proactively as well. A recent trend in criminal activity involves suspect groups utilizing stolen vehicles to target residential neighborhoods to commit vehicle burglaries and car thefts. Just last month, in the early morning hours, we were alerted to a stolen vehicle that was in one of our neighborhoods. The vehicle quickly was located, idling in the middle of a residential street with its lights turned off. As officers approached the vehicle, it, it took evasive measures to evade our patrol vehicles and the vehicle left the village and we did not receive any reports of burglaries or vehicle trespasses as a result of this intervention. This case shows the system's ability to interrupt crime. Another success involved residential burglary. Residential burglaries are very intrusive to the victim and their solvability is extremely low. Crimes are solved through victim and witness statements, suspected missions and physical evidence. In burglary investigations, we seldom have victim, witness or suspect testimony. Physical evidence is our best, is our best route to investigate those crimes. Sadly, we usually do a survey of the neighborhood and try to find home surveillance cameras, but sadly, those surveillance systems seldom capture detailed vehicle information. Last spring, a Vernon Hills resident fell victim to residential burglary. The home's front door was forced to open and the offender took, among other valuable items, two laptops, a digital SLR camera, several high-end camera lenses, lenses and multiple digital storage devices. We learned that our victim was a professional photographer. The equipment that was taken by the offender were tools our victim used every day for employment and a primary source of income. Additionally, the laptops and digital storage devices held photographs that were priceless to her customers. The assigned patrol officer began speaking with neighbors and found a Ring Doorbell footage that captured a pixelated image of the suspect vehicle. It also provided an image of the offender with a clothing description. The officer provided this information to our telecommunications center, who within moments had located the offending vehicle in our ALPR system. A query of the vehicle's registration revealed the registered owner was currently in custody at a neighboring agency for a driving offense. We retrieved the booking photograph from the neighboring agency and discovered their arrestee matched the description of our burglary suspect. He was still wearing the clothing seen on video during the burglary. A Vernon Hills investigator responded and although the offender refused to speak with us, we located our victim's property in his vehicle and on his person. We recovered her victim's property, but more importantly, we recovered her customer's priceless images. I'm very proud of this case. Having investigated dozens of burglaries, I know the extreme difficulty that comes with these types of crimes. Traditionally, simply identifying an offender is a challenge. Recovery of stolen goods is nearly impossible. Only hard work and luck advance these investigations, but the ALPR gives us an advantage. I speak for all the officers of the Vernon Hills Police Department and I thank the village for their continued commitment to this technology. Thank you.
Thank you, Commander. Thank you, Commander. Before I go on, when Commander Gillespie reached out to the victim of that burglary, just to clarify a couple of the nuances, so we can be very accurate with you, she actually asked if she could join us tonight. So, I wanna introduce a resident of ours. Come on up here, Dawn. Ms. Dawn Levy just wanted to address the board for a minute.
Hi, good evening. I first wanna thank you guys so much for the great police work. You know, you never really think that something like that is gonna happen to you. I was gone that weekend on a trip to Vegas and I came back and I had my bags, you know, out and I just was running a couple errands and I came back and I noticed that, you know, my door was ajar and then all of a sudden I looked and there was like wood all over and the, the person who broke into my house had kicked down the door and the whole entire frame of my door was like bashed in and everything like that. And I was just so scared at first, you know, oh my God, what if he's in my house and he's gonna hurt me and, you know, I just needed to get out of the house. So, the first thing I did was I called the police and they were there within like two minutes. I mean, they were so fast and very prompt and efficient and they had me wait outside so that they could check to make sure that nobody was in the house still. And then, after that, they had fingerprinted everything and were able to attain some fingerprints as well because of the great police work. But, what was really amazing, and I never thought that I would get the stuff back, I mean, imagine you guys have your wedding, cause many people in this room are married, imagine your photographer capturing the most important day of your life and it's stolen. Stolen. You cannot get that back. And with these kinda cameras that was able to catch this, this guy that, you know, came in and robbed my house, burgolized, it didn't just affect me, it affected every, you know, it just trickles down. It's just a trickle effect. And I can't, I mean, grateful isn't even the word. I don't even think that there are words to describe, but I can't, I couldn't believe it when he said, "We caught him. We have your camera. We have everything." Because I had just taken the pictures, they were still in the camera. So, when he took it, the S.D. card, I hadn't even had a chance to download them. So, thank God that, that that was recovered and I actually didn't even have to tell those people what actually happened. So, I was very grateful. Yeah, just till now, yes. Just till now, yes. I'll probably see this somewhere, but I just wanna say thank you and the importance of having these cameras are so vital and I'm behind it, whatever. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming and you know, this really highlights what we always say in policing is that we can only be effective when we have this partnership with the community. And so, Ms. Levy's instinct to call us right away was hugely important. Her neighbor's assertiveness or thoughtful thinking of having doorbell cameras, again, one of the smartest things to do if you own a home, have a doorbell camera. They cost about 150 bucks and maybe 30 bucks a year for this, for the internet connectivity. Those were crucial. Your quick call to us, the neighbor's doorbell camera partnered with really good police work, a neighborhood canvas, the moment we learned about this, to find that doorbell camera and then great work on the telecommunications to tie into this system, led to clearing a case that we just, I'm sorry, we probably wouldn't have been able to clear otherwise. If that suspect would have been released and he could have gotten rid of the, the property, all of these people would have been affected. So, it, it really is a great overall case. So, thank you so much for coming. Yeah, of course. Sorry. So, let me get back to my notes here. So, I, I wanted, just one more success story I wanna share with the community and I'll, I'll be just a little brief on this, but I wanna share with you that our investigators work on a countywide task force, a major crimes task force. So, if there's a homicide or sexual assault in any one of the Lake County communities, we're able to call on a team of experts to come and throw a lot of resources at the problem. Likewise, we share our investigators with those teams. And about a year and a half ago, our investigator was called out to a neighboring community to help them with the homicide investigation, a shooting that had just happened. And during an early response, within the first hour or so of that response, there was a description of a somewhat unique car that was associated with that crime. And our investigator knew the benefits of our ALPR system and at the time, we were one of the few communities with this, with this operating. Ran the, the unique descriptor of that vehicle, found a hit, even though this was 10 miles away from here, found a hit on our camera and by the end of that day, the major crimes task force had identified the homicide suspect, had essentially cleared the case. Now, unfortunately, the suspect was already in the wind and running and it took some time, but a warrant was secured for their arrest. That person's been since arrested and is being prosecuted for that homicide. Had it not been for this camera, who knows how long or if that case would have been eventually cleared. So, and, and importantly, these are with 10 cameras, actually 13 cameras, because one of our homeowner association put some up on non-state roads. So, that takes us to today and I wanna update you kinda where we're at right now. We have secured IDOT permits. We were one of two communities that finally got through that application process. I'm pleased to say now, I believe, our vendor and IDOT has sorted out the way to do that and that system seems to be working much more faster. Just today, we saw the first ALPR pole put on IDOT right away and our cameras are gonna be relocated to a place where they're gonna be much more successful at capturing images of license plates. Our neighbors, our, most of our neighbors are in the process of contracting with the same vendor and we interface one another, so any alerts on their cameras or our cameras are shared between officers. And very importantly, in the last month, we've just updated the, the board. You might remember last summer, I came to you with a, with a ordinance request to upgrade our in-car video system. Well, we got those installed last month and that new system, it's Axon Fleet 3 and that new video system, actually, the forward-looking camera has two cameras built in. It has a video camera to capture video motion and it has an ALPR camera tied into our Flock system. So, now we have 14 squad cars rolling around with ALPR cameras tied into our system and we just had our first success last week with a, one of our retailers was the victim of a retail theft and although the loss prevention agent knew information about this offender, they hadn't identified this offender. And when they hit the store and they left, a clerk got just, just a broad description of the vehicle, just the color and the make of the vehicle. And with that, our team was able to find two images of this vehicle. One, leaving town southbound, five minutes after the crime, grabbing an image of the plate. The other one, grabbing the car coming into town, one of our mobile Fleet 3 ALPR cameras grabbed the plate five minutes before. That information came together and actually identified- That information came together, it actually identified the offender. Not only did we clear our case, but we're able to share that with all the other jurisdictions that had been hit, and that individual, I think, has a warrant out for his arrest, identified, and we've secured an arrest warrant. So we're really excited about this, where this is going with the iDOT locations and our fleet. So what you're going to see in next year's budget is just a small expansion of this system. We, you'll see it coming up, it'll be for 11 cameras, because we're relocating some of our cameras, but the commander convinced me there was just one that we planned to move to a state right away that we would probably be wise to leave alone. So we've asked for expansion to 11 cameras. That's in the budget, you'll see that. That will mean to the tune of about $25,000 a year, so the community understands what we're spending. These cameras cost, depend on when you contract it, between $2,000, $2,500 a year to lease these cameras per year, but that's the entire network. And our cameras have been replaced multiple times since we've gone, as you can imagine, this kind of technology needs constant updating. The solar panels have gotten smaller, the batteries have gotten more powerful, the video, the camera images have gotten only better, and they maintain the whole backbone and network for that. The last thing I'll share with you is, although that's in the budget, that'll be before you next month, with concurrence of the board, I'd like to prepare and come to you next board meeting with an ordinance to spend some seizure, some forfeit seizure funds, because since we prepared our draft of the budget, there's a new technology or a new feature of this system available that is called a Falcon Flex, that is basically a portable one of these devices. So instead of having to put a pole in the ground, we can actually take one of these devices where we have a problem area, say a neighborhood's been being targeted by car burglaries or anything like that, we can actually move this, reach out to our partners at Public Works, say, hey, can you bring a ladder out? We can actually put one of these devices up portably. It'll run for a period of time, we'll have to swap the battery out. That system's a little more expensive, so that'd be to the tune of about $4,200 a year to lease that system, but the staff has convinced me that that's a worthwhile endeavor. So I'll prepare that ordinance for the board's consideration next week, and with that, I'll pause and see if there's any questions that come to mind or anything that I can clarify for the board.
Any questions in the board? No, it sounds like a great program, it's doing really well. Just the other end.
Fantastic. Very excited to hear all of the, all the good reports about the successes that you've had with that. Instead of the mobile one, would it be worthwhile just to spend a bit more money to have additional, even more than the 11 that you'd suggested, to get the entrances to all the neighborhoods?
Yeah, it's a great question. There's two reasons why I'm comfortable with 11 at this point, is because of the actions that our neighbors are taking and the way we'll be able to interface with all of our neighbors. So we don't necessarily need a camera at the entrance to every neighborhood if coming into Vernon Hills, we already are able to get that image. So strategically, I think, in the course of the next six months, as our neighbors deploy this, we'll have a good feature. We might want to come back to the board as we see that built out, and maybe there will be need for a little more, but I'm pretty comfortable right now saying, as our neighbors deploy this, we'll be in good shape.
Great.
Okay. Anybody else?
No, we were all for it before, and I'm sure we're all for it again.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Chief. Next item is the omnibus vote agenda. Is there a motion to approve items A?
(beep). Sorry.
So made.
Second. Motion in a second.
Yeah.
Any comments or questions about Omnis? Okay, then roll call, please.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markbart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. There is no unfinished additional business, no new business. Anybody have any new business of communication? If not, then we'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
We do have a brief closed session to discuss litigation and approval of minutes.
Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn and go to closed session?
Motion to adjourn and go to closed session.
For the reasons stated.
For the reasons stated.
For the reasons stated.
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
President Byrne.
Aye.
Trustee Schenk.
Aye.
Trustee Forster.
Aye.
Trustee Markbart.
Aye.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Aye.
Chairman Protem Cook.
Aye. Motion carries. So we're going to go to closed session, and we will not conduct any business, and it'll be a short closed session, so thank you all for coming. Thank you. Thank you.